So you don't get any of those.
You're gonna count it.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Any, who, who's been, you know, across.
I'm not, you know.
You sound like you think.
That's so.
The, the, I mean, uh, for the next couple of people to do what.
Your answer is, you know, you're, it's more than what you can tell them that you have to tell them.
They don't want to see because obviously, I don't.
They're, they're, you know, you're, you're telling them, you, you, you know. Got it. Kind of.
Alright. Anybody like to make a motion on accepting the minutes as red?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll say.
That's. Alright. So having a first and a second. Please raise your right hand if you approve of the minutes. Alright. Yes. Alright. This guy, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Harry, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, your first case this evening is P twenty-two. Zero two five two, Leonard Development Owner and applicant. Uh, this is located along Malcolm Bridge and Lindre Road. Uh, the parcel number is B zero two zero nine three B. It is currently zoned R two as part of the master plan development. Uh, it's the commercial portion designated for the R two master plan development along Lindre. Uh, in the uh, regional center character area. And the request is rezone the property from R two M P D to O B P. In order to develop a multi-use commercial development, including a daycare, doggy daycare facility, a dry cleaner, drop-off pickup center, and a small general office building. Uh, you have a concept plan in your packets that shows the designated uses. A slightly larger version. These are the architectural architectural images submitted with the application. And staff uh recommends conditional approval to B one zoning district, not the O B P that was requested. Um, we believe the B one is sufficient for for this location and for the uses that are being proposed. And we believe the applicant agrees with that. Uh, with the conditions of uh, well, four conditions, uh, one, two, and three are our standard conditions. And number four, uh, collection services for any uh, on premises dumpsters and or waste receptacles shall only be permitted between the hours of seven thirty A M and six P M. No such collections shall be permitted on Saturdays or Sundays. Service delivery used from Lindre Road is prohibited. And then we also have conditions five through eleven. Number five, service areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six-foot masonry wall with sod matching the exterior of the principal structure with black painted metal steel enclosure doors. Enclosure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. The crosswalk shall be installed, uh, connecting the project sidewalks along Lindre Road to Livingston Trail. No construction entrances shall be allowed onto the project site from Lindre Road. All site lighting shall consist solely of full cutoff luminaires as defined by the Illuminating Engineering Societies of America. Parking lots, lighting structures shall not exceed twenty feet in height. Number nine, no single tenant occupancy may occupy greater than fifteen thousand square feet. Number ten, the landscape strip along Lindre Road and Malcolm Bridge Road shall meet the requirements of U D C Article eight. With additional requirement, the new large trees shall have a caliper of no less than four inches as measured at six inches off the ground. At the time of planting, and all shrubs shall be a minimum of three-gallon container plants with a minimum height of twenty-four inches at the time of planting. And number eleven, illuminated and L E D signage is prohibited. Thank you.
Alright, can we get the petitioners representative?
Good evening. Um. My name is Frank Pittman. I live fourteen hundred Saxon Road. Um, I'm here representing the developer on this property. As Mr. Herring mentioned, this property is is currently uh, zoned R two M P D. It's the commercial portion of the art of the R two F P D subdivision that was done. So it's always intended to be commercial. Um, instead of trying to modify the M P D and and change the uses, it seemed cleaner just to to rezone this property. We've kind of gone away from M P Ds in Oconee County. So it's a little cleaner to try to reason on the property. Um, the requests were for an O B P zoning, which is what we thought it needed to go fall under after meeting with Mr. Herring. Um, he feels that a B one is appropriate and we're fine with that. Um, the um. My client wanted to, this is right next door to the um commercial strip center that's in that's finally starting construction um, across from the schools. And um, my client wanted to try to develop some commercial uses that are that are more in keeping with with residential subdivisions in in the in the vicinity. Um, so we're asking um for approval of this so that he could build a daycare facility. Um, and and he just, he he has done this in the past. He just opened one on um just outside of Watkinsville over by the new government uh, building that's been built. Um, a doggy daycare facility, a dry cleaner, pickup and drop-off, so they won't be cleaning there. There'd just be a drop-off pickup. And then there's a little little space left over that could function as an office or something. Um, it is next to the schools, uh, so it's a good good use that that kind of goes along with dropping your kids off at school. Um, we did have a traffic study completed. There were no adverse effects on the traffic, um, or the surrounding intersections based on this project. Um, with that, um, staff has recommended approval, and I'm here to ask you guys for recommendations as well. And I'll kind of leave leave it up in any questions, kind of reserve any time if I need it at the end.
Yeah, it's like. Alright, so at this time, we'll ask for any other uh, that would like to speak in favor of this project. Alright, so I don't see anybody rushing the podium, so I'll go ahead and suspend that portion. And now I'll ask uh, Byron Marshburn, you signed up to speak in opposition.
Good day. Good evening. My name is Brian Marshburn. I live at twenty-one seventy-five Harper Field Terrace. Uh, I actually didn't want to put my name on the opposition because I feel it's a property owner's constitutional right to take their property to highest best use. Uh, I do live in the back of this neighborhood and uh, come out here in the mornings. And the traffic is pretty tight. Uh, I feel like a daycare use on this site is uh, not an appropriate use. I feel that it should be put on a higher traffic corridor, uh, some location that would be uh, more appropriate for a use of uh that uh, would give the 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 use of better access. Uh, I'm not and uh, I I mean, I hope the the developer finds a use for the property. Uh, the neighborhood commercial uses I do agree with. The uh, the doggy daycare, I don't think is a is a good fit for the area. Uh, there is a doggy uh, a vet over on uh, Mars Hill. Mars Hill seems to be a little bit more of a transitional area between heavy uh, uses of commercial and industrial. Um, I don't think the the runway, lack of better words, Lindre Road or Mars Hill Road gives uh, enough uh ingress egress to allow all these cars to go into there. It's gonna be about two hundred cars a day, plus or minus in the morning and the evenings. Um. I've used daycare in the past. I know it's a need. I just don't know that it's an appropriate fit for that parcel. Uh, to me, it seems like it's a lot of uses in that little three-acre spot. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you. So does anybody want to come up and speak that didn't get a chance to sign up for this particular uh, item? Alright, I assume people in the back outside can still hear me. So if you wanted to speak on the project on Linru, you've you've had a chance. Alright. Since you still had some time left, Frank, do you want to address any other uh? Most of them, you already addressed in your application.
Yeah. Well, I'll just quickly reiterate and and, you know, I I appreciate Mr. Marshburn coming up and speaking. Um, we we did, and I'll send you in Hockville, Hockville subdivision, where did you go?
Right.
Your Hockville subdivision? Yes, I mean, we we reached out to the H O A Director of Harper Field and and asked if we need to meet with anybody over there, and we're told that there was no reason to that that there were no issues. Um, so we're we're glad to do that moving forward if if we need to. Um, I did just want to reiterate, I guess, that this this property is commercial today, uh, zoned for commercial uses similar to this. Um, and we feel like these uses are or or as far as commercial uses go are are very in tune with the neighboring subdivisions and the schools across the road. It's a lot easier to, you got kids of varying various ages. You're dropping them off right across the road from each other instead of coming up here to the school and then going halfway, you know, miles away to drop the other one off at daycare. So we we do feel like it that they they fit together. Um, as far as traffic and and on Lindre, the main entrance to the property is on Malcolm Bridge. There is a there is an entrance on Lindre. That's that's the back of the development, but but the intent is for I mean, obviously, you can't control where people come from, but the intent is most of the entries and exit to be on Malcolm Bridge. So, thank you.
Alright, um, so I don't see or I haven't seen any hands trying to get my attention, so I'll bring it up to the to the uh, table up here. I'll close the public input. Guys, any comments?
I've got one question for staff. Uh, with the adjustment from uh O B P or uh, uh, to uh B one, is there a, just speaking in terms of that traffic, are there any adjustments for a number of spaces? Parking spaces that would uh, need to be considered?
No, that's based on the use.
Any other questions?
I mean, this is probably self-explanatory by the description, but it does say doggy daycare, so I'm assuming no overnight.
That's correct.
Okay.
Alright. So now I need to encourage you for a motion. A motion to approve with staff recommendation.
One second.
Alright. We have a first and a second, proving with staff recommendations. Um, proposal, P twenty-two, zero two five two. If you are in favor of this motion, please raise your right hand. That looks unanimous to me. Alright. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Herring to come back for the next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Your next case is P twenty-two zero two five three, uh, rezone with a special use, P twenty-two zero two five four. Um, we'll go through these both in the same presentation with um, action to follow separately. This is the aerial photographs of the subject property. It is C zero two zero four four A. So it's currently zoned B two in the community village character area. And rezone P twenty-two zero two five three is requesting revision to the conditions previously approved for zoning case six, seven, nine, seven, which approves some self-storage as part of the project. Uh, the rest was retail. The proposed plan is a modification of the previously approved zoning concept plan. And then special use, P twenty-two zero two five four is a special use approval to construct a self-storage facility under the existing B two zoning. And this is a principal use as allowed by special use approval in the B two zoning district according to section two oh five ten of U D C. Uh, you have this concept plan in your application packets. And these architectural images were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval, uh, with our three standard conditions. Uh, number four, if special exception variance, the applicant is filed to reduce the fifty-foot buffer to twenty-five along the western side of the property is not approved, then the site plan must be revised accordingly. And those are the only conditions, those four. Thank you.
Correct. So it looks like Mr. Pittman, you're representing the owner.
Yes, uh, again, Frank Pittman, I live at fourteen hundred Saxon Road. Um, representing the the current property owner of this property. So as Mr. Herring mentioned, this this is on B two today, which is which is a zoning class that allows for self-storage. Under its original zoning, um, it was approved with the uses of of self-storage, a restaurant, and a a strip shopping center. Um, the strip center was built, I think, I don't know whether it was sixty, seventies. It's been it's been around for a long, long time. Um, the the building has aged. It it's kind of reached its life cycle. There's still some kind of office warehouse users in there today. Um, but it it's time for them to put some more money into the property to to kind of bring it up to current current day. Um, the request is to modify the to do a zoning modification. It's not a rezone um, to just change the approved uses to just a self-storage use. Um, which would do away with the the restaurant use and the strip center use. Um, but under the the existing zoning class, um, self-storage, um, as as we've talked about in the past, is a is a very low-traffic commercial use. Um, doesn't put a burden on utilities or on the school system or on the roadways. Um, it's a it's a large tax producer without a a burden on on any of those things. Um, it does fit the official land use map, fits fits existing zoning class. And uh, staff has recommended approval, and and I would ask for your else's recommendation here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thanks. So as we did last time, I'll ask, does there anybody else who want to speak in favor of this uh proposal? I don't see anybody on paper. Alright. So I'll go ahead and uh, start the opposition. Um. Mr. Herron, we're gonna have to put on here police print in the future, but I'll do the best I can. So the first couple of names, I must have your legal uh, signatures. If you knew, you signed up first, you're welcome to come up and introduce yourself. And then I can start making out some of the names as I get further down. It doesn't have to be in this particular order, but the first three I cannot read. So you can come first and claim one of these signatures if you'd like.
My name is Catherine Kimmel, and I live on ten ninety Haygood Lane, next to Athens Academy. Um, I also, I'm the newest tenant of this building as of summer, this last summer, and my lease is up in May. Um, she encouraged me to do a year lease, so that's what I did. Um, I am an interior designer. I grew up in Oconee County and I went to U G A. Um, so I've lived in Athens my whole life. And I have three kids who go to Oconee County Schools, and this is a very important part of, it's Oconee and Athens, so this is also very close to my house. Um. I just opened my studio space there in the summer and um I'm a small business owner, and I have been doing interior design since two thousand fifteen. I do um, mostly residential. Um, but I do have a little bit of a pulse on property and what I think is a good use of certain areas, and I know that this is a main pass-through for one from Five Points, from U G A, from campus to the main four forty-one highway and the loop. Um, and so there's a reason why the other side of this corner is where Mama's Boy opened their second restaurant. Amici's is there, uh, Dutchman's is there. It's a very high retail area right there. Um, there's other small business owners in the area. Molly's Coffee opened across the street. And the Pedal Exchange is actually on this property in the front corner. It's not part of this proposal. Um, so I think that it's a growing small business area. I know that I'm probably, I'm the newest tenant of the building. I know I'm between two churches and there's a Athens Digital Systems, which is also on the end, who have been there for a while. Um, so we all would have to find a new place to go, which is part of renting, and I get that they the owner has the right to do that. Um. But I think that it could be used in a better way than a two-story or three-story storage unit that is very large, and I know that they say that it's not a lot of traffic because it's a commercial use. Um. But if you've ever turned right onto Macon Highway from four forty-one and then had to turn right into our building right there, it's a very quick, short area. So I mean, I always put my blinker on immediately because people, I just imagine like U-Haul trailers and you know, everything else. And there's also another entrance off four forty-one. It's kind of a diamond or a triangle shape right there. Um. So I just think that it has, I'm not saying that they shouldn't update the building. Trust me, I know it's old. I live there. I I actually I renovated here as well. Um. Which is another, that's more of a personal reason why I don't want to lose it, just because I worked really hard to get to where I am right now with my business and I just, it was a little deflating to sign a year lease and have her say that they're gonna bulldoze the building. So, um. And actually, she didn't tell me that that was what, she actually told me that's not what was gonna happen when I asked her about it. So that's why I showed up here tonight. Um. I just felt the need that I needed to exercise a right to come speak, and I mean, as a small business owner, I know how hard people work. And I think it is, I, you know, we contribute to the community. I know that we all have families and we want this to be a place where I mean, if they want to update the building, I would even suggest making it match the other side or do something similar to the other side where there's restaurants and which is what it was originally, is what you said it was originally zoned for. Maybe that there were restaurants, possibly retail area, um. Shopping, whatever. It could even be a two-story area. Um. You know, similar to what they're doing down at Wire Park if they wanted to do something that was more grand. And I know that storage units are profitable. I there's no denying that. Um, and I get as a building owner or property owner, why you would want to do that. Um, but just from the small business community, I felt like I needed to come and say that I feel like it would be more appealing to the community and just draw families and everything in. So that's basically all I had to say.
Thank you. Alright, so as I've admitted, there's two names that I still can't read. Uh, but it looks like I have a Billy. Uh. I'm gonna assume the first letter S.
I think it's Bill Gay.
There you go. That'll work.
I live at ten sixty-one Rockinwood Drive. And if you guys have been in that neighborhood and come in that little newly redesigned intersection, you realize that there's a very congested area right there at at Macon Highway. Uh, it's people coming off of four forty-one coming into Rockinwood. I've actually met tractor trailers head-on in the in the lane I'm supposed to be coming on to Rockinwood because they don't understand, I don't know why they don't understand a left turn, no left turn sign, but they don't. And my concern is if we put a storage unit in there, we're gonna have more people with trucks and trailers and things like that that are gonna be coming in. I've gone to the sheriff's office and talked with two different deputies down there about the traffic situation there that we already have. I was asked uh, to fill out a report on it, which I did. I requested somebody from the sheriff's office to come out and let me show them the concerns that we've got because somebody's gonna get killed there as we got the traffic flow now. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like when we add storage unit in there. Oh, I just wish, you know, somebody would do a a traffic feasibility on that whole intersection before we put a building in there that's gonna multiply the number of people in and out every day. As I live in the first house on Rockinwood, uh, that's up on the street. There's a house behind me, but uh, I live right there at the corner and it's 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 dangerous already. I just don't know what we're gonna do if we get more people in there. Thank you.
Looks like Cindy Meyer uh, signed up next. And
I signed, but I'm not.
Understood. Uh, Mike Han?
That'd be my call. I'm really uh, sorry. Sure, what I was meaning. Which one I was, I'm more concerned about another issue before you. But I I will echo your words. I'm not sure that's a good use of something to put in front of a residential area like that. And I would hope that people are gonna remember, I know it's attractive with all the students that have moved into that development down there, but we do have a longstanding neighborhood that's right there, cut off nicely with some trees. I know somebody owns that land and might want to use it. The noise and light pollution screen that we get from the trees that come on up there. I know you're talking about a parcel that's down closer to Mama's Boy. But there will be another discussion later for developing that up there. I'm not sure it's a good use of something to put in front of our neighborhood.
Alright, I have a Jeff and yeah, it's a D I.
Duroche.
There you go. I'm sorry, I
It's fine.
I have a phonemic awareness issue.
Is there any way? Okay, go back to the first picture slide. What is particularly, it's the map that has the colors for the, for designing.
There it is, right there. Um, as if you can see R two right there, that's Natalie Court, that comes right off of Macon Highway. And if you actually see where White Oak Drive turns into Macon Highway, that's about a tenth of a mile. And there are four entrances, two on each side, which I think she addressed, having to turn her pointer on. That's an issue. An issue I have also with is the uh, the request to uh, reduce the buffer, cut it in half to twenty-five feet. I mean, we know Oconee has the smallest buffers of any county in the state as it is. And cutting this in half is gonna affect everybody on Natalie Court, which interestingly enough is not labeled there, which is R two. Um. It's a multi uh, family uh, units. A lot of folks live there. In addition to that, there's all the um, issues that we were discussing with the uh um, the best use of this property. And yes, self-storage is profitable, but it's the kind of thing that people build and they sell to a you know, a big group like the one that happened further up Macon Highway that was bu- developed locally and then sold to, you know, in an investment, a foreign investment firm. We're not for them, but out of state. Uh, and uh, it's just not the best thing for us. I did have a question. I was, and I don't know if you can answer this, and that's fine. But mentioning traffic analysis that was mentioned earlier, hasn't traffic analysis been done on Old Macon Highway since the Apage Ridge development that they've been putting in place? Because I moved into twelve forty, I forgot to put my address out, twenty, twelve forty-one Aggiewood Drive, moved there at oh nine. Similar years later, they developed Athens Ridge Properties, and the traffic on the Old Macon Highway right there went up at least four or five times what it was. And I do have issue with these uh, um, particular estimates. I mean, a hundred and nineteen average daily trips seems low to me, but it also seems a lot compared to what we already have. And you couple that with, you know, the effect that we're gonna be messing with the uh, buffer that goes right up against that housing where those folks live there in R two, where the school bus drops those kids off right at the entrance. I just don't think this is a wise idea to have people running in and out with U-Haul's vans and uh some of these places, the ones that are outside uh, accessible um, storage units will be uh, accessed twenty-four seconds. And that's not a good spot as well. And if you, any of you have ever been on this little triangle, it's a small little area. When you turn on, you pop around, I mean, this that's not even like a quarter mile maybe for the Old Macon Highway right there. And like I said, White Oak is like a tenth of a mile, so you're putting a whole lot of congestion into an already congested area. And uh, it's not the right kind of traffic we want any. You know, it's pretty much the same. And that also goes with the uh um, I guess we're grouping these two together, so.
The special use.
Special use, they in the reason, right? Yeah, two fifty-three and two fifty-four. Yeah, yeah. And uh, I'll have similar concerns with fifty-six and fifty-seven, but
We'll get there.
We'll see if we need to get it or not.
We'll get there. Alright. So we're down to Jan Stansel.
I'm gonna let him go.
Alright, Elmer, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I know you guys have a hard job. Sometimes you can't make anybody happy. And you don't get paid anything. I know it's hard, so I have sympathy for you. But uh, I live, I mean, Elmer Stansel, I live on Sunnyside Drive. I don't know if you know that, that's about maybe a block over from where all this is going to take place and uh my wife and I are ad- adamantly opposed to this for a number of reasons. Uh. Uh, he mentioned the buffer zone earlier. Uh, I sure hope we would never lose that buffer zone. Yeah, I don't know if y'all know what uh, an exhaust brake is on a semi or sometimes it's called a Jake brake. I can uh I could show you what. That's what it sounds like to sit on the porch. Uh. And they're coming down a hill and they're trying to get stopped. There's also a uh uh, an ambulance service in there. I think it's National. And I won't do a siree for it, but we can hear them real well over there and uh. I think the original zoning that we have right now would be wonderful. Uh. For a restaurant and some strip stuff, you know, those, i- i- people, somebody uh traffic, yeah, that's bad, but uh, how many jobs is a mini warehouse gonna create? You know, when we look at Oconee County, we look at jobs that they might bring in, how how it will help the tax base and things like that. Uh. Mini warehouses on the very low end of all that, I think. They don't have any employees and they pay property tax, but that's about it. And uh seems like there was about half a dozen other things, but I can't think of. Anyway. seems like there was about half a dozen other things, but I can't think of. Anyway, uh, we're opposed to it and, uh, I hope you see fit to turn down this request or at least delay it for right now. Cause a lot of these people here are just getting started, you know? Sometimes it's hard to gather up all the information about these things. And a lot of us are just getting started. And, and one other thing, I'd like to ask, uh, this crowd here, uh, if you're in, uh, in favor of this.
And he's already asked this question, if in favor of this. Yeah, that's kind of the behavior we don't need right now, I'm afraid. We, I can tell by shirts, I assume you guys chose.
Well, uh, we got some people who are not wearing red shirts. Probably got red underwear on, but thank you again.
All right.
Thank you.
So I've got two more on, uh, Peter Steckel and, um, Christopher Reed stand on deck. Can we have just enough time if you guys want to add anything to this?
All right. Hello, my name is Peter Steckel. I know we're in a hurry, so I'll start speaking as I approach. Anyway, uh, I'm, uh, asking that, uh, the review board, uh, deny the rezoning application for in addition to the reasons that have already been stated. Um, I don't think, uh, there's some additional ones. First off, by adding a second floor to this, e- effectively, you're going to be putting lights way higher up into the actual building area that is going to be broadcasting lights directly into residential neighborhoods. That's something that I've got a real issue with these drawings on there, uh, in the applications. They do not do a good job of showing how narrow the roads are around there. Anybody who's been on White Oak can know that that thing's barely enough to get toothpick through it, let alone a bunch of trucks, uh, in addition to Old Macon Highway. Um, so you're gonna be broadcasting an enormous amount of light into residential areas. That light is going to be on twenty-four seven. Um, secondly, in the applications, I noticed that there, despite it being a self-storage center that would be redone, they're asking for and mentioning use of sewer, use of water. Does Oconee County really have this amount of water now available for use for this? Um, in addition to, to reiterate what's already been said, the, uh, um, I with the storage center, there will be no additional jobs. If it's kept zoned as it is, there's at least an opportunity for additional jobs. Uh, something, um, and finally, one factor that I have not seen mentioned regarding this is you're effectively going to have the same owner of adjacent parcels owning two. If the board affirms the application for rezoning on both of these, you're gonna have two parcels effectively well in excess of the three acre limitation on self-storage units. So i- i- to me, that's a distinction without a difference. If you're going to put two adjacent parcels owned by the same party, doing effectively the same thing. That's, that's a way of, you know, I've got a real issues with that. So for all of these reasons and additional ones that I will mention when we get to the proper time, I respectfully request that this board deny this zoning rea- uh, up, or this request for an amendment on the zoning. Thank you.
I, I was gonna call Christopher Reed up. He, Peter left you just enough time.
I, uh, I only wanted to speak for, uh.
The next one? Okay. All right. So that just about exhausts our time for opposition. Uh, Frank, uh, has a little bit of time left. I'll let him answer a couple of questions that might clear up some questions that are up here.
I try to, I try to take good notes. If I missed anybody, I apologize. Um, but I just wanted to touch on some of the comments and questions that were made. You know, as far as Ms. Kimmel being a tenant, yeah, I, I guess I don't have much to speak on that. I, I don't want to get into conversations about leases between property owners and and tenants. Um, that's for sure outside of what, of what my role is here. The, uh, I think she mentioned that this could be a three-story building, but it, this is a two-story building, not a three-story building. As far as the turn on, on to the, the street off of four forty-one and it being a quick driveway, we're actually moving the driveway over so that there is more room there and we're adding a decel lane as well so that, so there isn't a quick turn straight into the property from what's there today. You know, there's, I guess they, and everybody has, has their opinion and, and I, I, I respect and appreciate that. There's, there's some conflicting opinions, I guess. Um, I heard Ms. Kimmel say that she would like restaurants there. And then I heard other people say they don't, there's too much traffic there today. So you, you couldn't have both. Um, if there was a restaurant there today, which could be built without me coming to you guys, um, a restaurant, traffic is probably ten to twenty times what, what the self-storage building would be, just a restaurant alone. So um, the property is on B two, um, it, it, there are a lot of high-traffic uses that are allowed there today without having to come to you guys. We're not asking for a rezon. We're asking for just the modification of the uses to, to what is, um, typically considered one of the lowest traffic B two zonings there is or uses under B two zonings. Mr. Gailey mentioned the congestion on the highway again. Um, this, this traffic is, will be significantly less than even what the uses were there today. Um, the, the decel lane is added to, to also help, help fix any kind of problems that may be there. Mr. Home mentioned noise and light pollution. Um, again, I would, I guess I would say that that, uh, self-storage use would be significantly less than a restaurant that could be open till eleven or twelve o'clock at night. Um, and, and have trash trucks coming in e- every, every night, every morning, whereas this would not have that. Mr. DeRoche mentioned multiple entrances. We, we show one entrance on, on the main road down there. Um, there is a, there is a second entrance that is an existing entrance down here that we would be tying into. Um, but, but that is already there today and it accesses two other properties as well. Um, I know you guys are not here to hear the buffer reduction, but I, I'll touch on that. The buffer reduction is because th- there is no buffer there today. So the, the existing building and, and development is within what would, what would be the required buffer. We're, we're actually improving that over what is there today. Um, even with the reduction request that, that you guys don't vote on. I guess there was, there was a question about, has there been a traffic study? Um, and the projected traffic seems low. The, these numbers are, are not numbers that I came up with. These, these are straight out of national publications for, for traffic studies that are done all over the country for, for this use. So, so those, those numbers are pretty accurate and the same numbers used everywhere all over the country. Mr. Stansel mentioned, uh, I guess semi exhaust brakes. I'm not really sure what, how that relates to this project. Um, I, I get that there's a lot of traffic on Highway four forty-one. Um, again, we would be decreasing the traffic over what, what would be allowed there today. I would agree that there, there, that these uses, this use does not have a lot of employees. Um, and I don't, I guess I'll have an argument about that. He is a big taxpayer and I think that is, um, probably a pretty important thing to Oconee County. Mr. Steckel mentioned the second floor lights. Um, I'm pretty sure that building that's there today also has a second floor on it. Um, it also
Is it not two stories on one side of it, the backside of it?
Okay, okay. Uh, okay, sorry. Yeah, I have many times, actually. Thank you. Um, what's, what's the allowed height and B two, Mr. Harry?
Forty-five feet?
So they could build a three-story building there today, um, under the existing uses. So, you know, I guess I would say that a two-story building would be a little bit better than that. Um, as far as water and sewer, where we have one, one bathroom for an office of one or two people, so there's not a lot of use there. Oconee County has already issued letters saying they have the capacity for it. Um, as far as the limitation on acreage, this was in no way a way to try to skirt the system. Um, there is a three-acre limit on a standalone self-storage facility. There's also a five-acre limit on self-storage as part of a mixed-use facility. The same owner owns the other building in between that, so they could either be two standalones or it could all go together as one mixed use and it would fall under either one of them. So there, there was no way to skirt the system. They were done separately at the request of planning department because they were under two original separate zonings. And you couldn't put them together because of two different zonings. Um, I think I've covered everybody's comments. Um, and so I've leave it up to you guys for any additional questions. Thank you.
All right. So this point, we are closing the public comment. I think we've got a lot of things to think about up here. So now I open it to my colleague. Sir, you guys, I, I invited everybody. No, he, he had some time left. We had twenty minutes for each side and we used it for all the different points that you guys needed to make. So, uh, I'm sorry, there isn't a rebuttal opportunity, but you might hear some of that rebuttal go on up here. All right. So bring it to the, uh, table up front. And guys, you got any questions for Mr. Harry or Mr. Pittman?
I have one for Mr. Pittman. The, has there been any consideration given to making the new driveway right turn in, right turn out only? Because Old Macon Highway is so close to the driveway. One, one certain amount is the two, two cars turning left driveway and.
Which driveway are you talking about on the plan there?
Was the one you moved with the turn lane off of White Oak?
I mean, I don't, it hasn't been discussed. I, I think that that probably create, i- if that was the case, that probably creates more issues for these people that live in these subdivisions because anybody coming from towards Athens that's now got to turn on the other road to go in there. There's no way for them to turn in the other. I mean, that would be what I would say to that. I mean, I don't know that anybody would necessarily be opposed to that, but I think that that I, I don't think that benefits them.
So come on, I recognize. I'm thinking that building, did this building used to be people?
Uh, that's correct.
So the E-hype's on it now, it's twenty-five or twenty-six.
That's right.
So the, the owner is looking to add more E-hype than what's there or just turn the interior into the.
Let's say it'll be, it'll be a new building. They're, they're gonna raise that building, build a, a, a new building. But it would be very similar. I mean, that is, that is, that's why I thought it's two stories because it's very high on one side. It's lower on one side.
What are all the, the, the total projects, uh, trips per day?
For, for this project?
Well, when you add all the reasons, uh, what were it, one's a hundred and fourteen, one's thirty-four, is that what it is?
On the, on this one and the one that hadn't been heard yet?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a total before we start talking about.
Um, let's see. Got that other number in front of me, Matt. I mean, that's, the other one's only, the other one's only estimated thirty-four. You, you're a hundred and
What's this?
Hundred and nineteen on this, so I mean, you're a hundred and fifty-three total trips a day. Yeah, and that, that's coming and going, right? I mean, that's, that's half that many cars coming and half that many cars leaving.
Yeah.
So I mean, these, these things do not produce much traffic. And, and again, these are numbers that I didn't make these numbers up. They're straight out of the I T manual. Um, the same, same book that everybody uses all over the country for these traffic estimations.
Right. So totally looking at, if you divide that, you know, seventy-five trips.
Right, seventy-five vehicles coming, seventy-five going.
Yeah, and on a restaurant use, if, if they turn this building into restaurants or decide to do a different use with it. Any of our professionals.
Fifteen hundred to two thousand trips a day. Just for the restaurant use alone. And if, you know, they, they could build a strip center, a restaurant and self-storage. Depends on the restaurant, correct. Um, you would hope that, I mean, if you open a restaurant, you would hope you had that many trips where you wouldn't stay in business. You know, like at the Falls, we've already had a couple of go out of business over there. So, um, a, a, and a successful restaurant is fifteen hundred, two thousand trips a day.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else up here? Have any comments? So as a reminder, we're voting on, uh, I'm just gonna call it, call it proposal zero-two-five-three. Uh, it has a, a company special use two-five-four. Uh, guy, we don't vote on that. We just are considering that and, and talking about the questions. Is that correct? Or do you need a vote for the special use from us today?
Right, you'll need two different actions, two separate actions, right? One for the reason and then one for the special use.
All right. And so is everybody familiar with the special use? The reduction of, uh, um, buffers, the question. All right, no, uh, no, sorry, my bad.
Right. There is no buffer reduction request before you this evening.
So it's just the particular use that we're special using.
I got it.
All right.
Quick question, cause I haven't seen it. I may have missed it, but, uh, we were talking about heights earlier on the special use change. Is there, uh, are you specifically saying you're not gonna go above?
We'll go above two stories. Two stories.
Two stories.
Yes, sir.
And that's part of the condition. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm not seeing too many more questions, so I'm gonna ask for some sort of action. Okay, go ahead, keep going.
That the, uh, the staff agree with the hundred fifty-three dollar trips a day for, from the manual?
Yeah, yes, that, that's right, yeah. That, we use the I T. That's correct, yes. That's right.
All right, so I'm encouraging a motion on, uh, two-five-three at this time, anybody?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve. P twenty-two, zero, zero, five, three and five-four with the condition.
All right, Matt's gonna go ahead and.
And the staff conditions.
All right. So I have Matt as a first on the two proposals. Anybody wanna go second?
I'll cycle those.
Okay.
What's the conditions? Best thing.
All right. So I have a first and a second. Let's take a vote on the first one. Uh, first, the two-five-three, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Looks unanimous. All right. And then on the, uh, special u- use, um, raise your right hand if you're in favor of it as written by the staff. All right. So these will go to the Board of Commissioners. Uh, they'll hear some of you guys again and they are the final verdict. But two-five-three and two-five-four have passed the Board of, uh, the Planning Commission at this time. So, Mr. Harry, and I'll invite you up for next two-five-seven, I guess it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P twenty-two, zero, two-five-seven. Um, and special use, P twenty-two, zero, two-five-six, um, Graham Leasing LLC. This is just down the road from the other subject parcels. So this is on C zero-two, zero-nine-four-A. It's currently zoned B two. In the community village character area. And again, similar to the others, the request, uh, revision to the conditions previously approved for zoning case four-seven-zero-six, which allowed for office and shop use. The proposed plan is a modification of the previously approved zoning plan. And special use, P twenty-two, zero, two-five-six, is again requesting a special use to construct a self-storage facility under the existing B two zoning. This is a principal use that is allowed by special use approval in the B two zoning district. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets, a slightly larger version. Again, the architectural image is submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approvals subject to our three standard conditions. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Pittman, I think you're on deck.
Frank Pittman, fourteen hundred Saxon Road. I'll try to be brief. This is, um, same property owner. It's a property we just talked about. Again, this is an existing B two zoning as well. Um, the, the use that was proposed under the, um, existing zoning was an office and I think it was a, a lawnmower repair, uh, shop, um, that, that never got built. So the, this, this would be another building related to the first request. Um, this would not have an office. The, the office is in the first. Um, this would not have an office at the, the offices in the first, the first main building. Um, so it's, it's the same owner owns this whole kind of whole triangle here and, and it's, it's really trying to do a whole overall mixed use kind of development. Um, this is uh less square footage than the first one um by a significant amount. Um, the, the, so the traffic, projected traffic is about a third or maybe even a fourth of what the other one was. We talked about the, the total number. Again, this, this request is to just modify the existing use under the existing zoning that is B two. Um, and again, staff's recommended approval, and um I'm, I'll leave it up to you questions. Ask for y'all's recommendation. Thank you.
Alright. So I don't have any other than uh Mr. Pittman signed up on, in favor. Is there anybody in the audience that? Alright, so we will open the twenty minutes of opposition. Uh, the list looks pretty much the same, so I'll go ahead and ask those that have spoken. Would you like to speak again on behalf of this, or should we assume that you, you can just say I pretty much same comments, whatever? Okay. Yeah, that's Peter I, I recognize. Understood. We, we don't often do the rebuttal thing, but we are actually a- asking the uh representative to come up and answer some questions that may have been addressed. But uh, we don't call it a rebuttal, and so I'll do the best I can. Alright. Um.
Alright, I'll, I'll just go real quick.
Yep.
Um. Lawrence Jeffrey DeRoche, twelve forty-one Ivywood Drive. The little road at the bottom right. That is Ivywood Drive coming up. Exiting to the Old Macon Highway there. It's a basically a single lane road. And the new building is just a small little triangle of trees that buffers us from the Jake Bacon breaking trucks as they approach the light at Wide Oak and four forty-one going northbound. Um, when we pull out now, if we were to turn left to try to go, say, here to engage in civic and community stuff with our county folks. We used to be able to turn left, but now we have to go all the way down at Wide Open, turn around and come back. Uh, if we were to go right, we have to go down and then turn and come back. Um, all these new units and that are in uh drives that are coming in are gonna affect our ability just to get out of our neighborhood. And not only that, the building is right there at the entrance. I don't see how this can be separate from the rest of it, especially since this is all the same unit and the fact that it's thirty-four. Uh, I mean, it's not good faith to say it's only gonna be thirty-four trips when it's basically the same as the hundred and nineteen trips that are coming from the one on the other end of the block. I mean, I, I, I just don't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I don't wanna waste a lot of time. I had some more stuff that I'm gonna say, but, oh yeah, the stormwater um. I'd like to hear some more about how this, how they're gonna handle the stormwater. Because that is also happening right there at Natalie Court. Those folks don't seem to have a voice, so I'm trying to speak up for them as well. Um. Like the mentioning of the, the rezoning or the, I'm sorry, the uh the twenty-five foot buffer that was saying there's not one now at all anyway. So how do you reduce, cut some in half that's not there? Doesn't make sense. And I really wish you guys, if you haven't seen this area, would have seen what it's like there now because it doesn't it, it doesn't seem like it's physically possible to put a building in that little tiny area and have people to be able to park and get in and out without causing trouble and congestion with uh the neighborhood entrances and the other bu- businesses and uh the church right across the street, which is not even being shown. Um, and Athens Ridge not being shown, a lot of stuff not being shown here. But either way, this one is probably the worst of them all compared to them. And I'll uh.
Alright, Mike, was this the one you wanted to speak on more? You signed up on this one as well?
I'll use the opportunity to clarify for Mr. Pittman what I was talking about. I'd this, of these two parcels, I'm far more concerned about this one. You really need to look at it. You guys must know where it is. I mean, must know what it is. That little bitty triangle, when I was speaking about a screen for noise and lights, those trees that have grown up and since it's been cut off like that do provide that. There's just trees there right now, and I really don't wanna come out of my neighborhood. Eleven forty-one Ivywood Drive is where I live. And, you know, have a, something that's not in keeping with the residential neighborhood, which is what we are there, right across from.
Yeah. Alright, I see a new name on here, Mallory Moy.
Hi, I'm Mallory Moy. I live at eleven twenty-one Ivywood Drive. And first off, I just wanna thank all my neighbors who are here. We are all in red. Some of us are not in red, but we're still here. Um. This was the issue that I had the most concerns with. We're talking a lot about the traffic that's gonna be going in and out of the facility itself. That might be what you said. The thing is, is when you clearcut this property, it's only two acres, and part of that is a giant slope leading down to four forty-one. So when you clearcut the, the buffer, the wooded buffer that Mike was talking about before and put a two-story twenty-four thousand square foot industrial building with lights all the way around, which I know nobody cares about here. Um, that is basically putting a big old promotion that this is a cut through between four forty-one and old four forty-one. That's already an issue for our neighborhood. It's extremely dangerous. We have a three-way, well, it's actually a two-way stop um coming in at Rock and Wood off of Macon Highway. And I just fear putting this giant building on top of the hill is not only going to be a menace to us, but it's gonna be dangerous on top of an already dangerous situation. I think these maps are drawn in a way where you're not able to see just how dangerous these curves on White Oak Drive is. And I, I am concerned about the businesses that are, you know, the tenants down there who are gonna lose their business space. I think you're hearing conflicting messages because we are conflicted because I am not naive enough to think a developer isn't going to develop every inch of land they possibly can. However, is that the best use of space? So we have to think about the cost of doing business. And if we put a storage facility there, we are putting money into one person's pocket, and they will probably sell it to a larger organization. If we put office space like it is intended, this acre, uh, two acres of land is originally intended for. Not only is traffic only minimized to eight to five PM Monday through Friday, but it's also supporting our local businesses. We have Molly from Molly's Coffee Shop lives in our neighborhood. Kristen, her manager's right here behind us. I am fine fighting a little more traffic, knowing that they have a job, knowing that they have support from our community. Um, so it is conflicting because what I'd like to see it to stay put is a wooded area, absolutely, but we know that change is inevitable. And um, so then it's just, we'd like to see it used to the best of its ability and to the best of the community. And it's also worth noting, and I don't know if you have research on this, but one of my neighbors who I'm speaking on behalf of today, she called all ten of our storage facilities in O'Conny County. None of those are at full capacity. So I wonder about the needs. She also, thank you guys. So she also called all eight. Well, she started in Clark County. She started with the first eight storage facilities that on her list. None of those were at um full capacity either. And so there's truly, is there even a need for more for storage facilities? Thank you.
Alright, for um, we're still doing good. We've got about eight more minutes left in this section. So do you wanna come up at this time, Peter? Alright.
Uh, just just to approach and discuss some points against this development, both in terms of the uh rezoning or zoning, uh, uh rezoning application, to use a colloquial term, to allow for the uh development of a uh potential development of a uh storage center as well as any building there. One of the key differences which everybody's made, but I'm gonna reiterate, is there is no building there now. So you're talking about adding a two-story building at the crest of a hill unless this, from that drawing, there is no way that that owner is gonna do anything other than build on the crest of that hill. So you're talking about putting lights, enormous lights, fifty feet up. And I will say, as I live at eleven twenty Ivywood Drive, and every time I circle the block, I go walking by there, I've noticed a variety of what we believe may be uh red crested woodpeckers, which are on the not endangered species list, but they are on a list of birds that need to be considered when dealing with zoning things. So whether or not you rezoned this, I don't know that anything has the ability to be built there, given the fact that there may be these present and regulars. In addition to that, uh, I know y'all have heard a lot about traffic use, and they'll keep referring to this book that says, you know, we've got a hundred and eleven trips, you've got thirty-five trips. That is just a book that's using a set of standards that I don't know are applicable to here. How many of y'all have been down to uh the storage center behind the Zaxx feeds attached to the um uh attached to the car wash, I believe, M and J, or excuse me, J and M Storage. I stored my stuff there for two years in a small spot. I've been out there for ninety minutes at a time. Now, according to the size and the number of storage units on there, that traffic book shows that it would be approximately thirty-five visits a day. Not unlike the redevelopment that we're talking about uh on the earlier spot. I'll tell you this, in that ninety minutes I was there, you saw more than thirty-five visits going to the storage center. So just because that book says that's the case and offers some coverage to professionals doesn't mean it's actually applicable for y'all. Finally, the other thing I want y'all to take into account, aside from the water issues I raised and some of these other ones that we've raised earlier, and aside from, and I don't think y'all addressed it enough, the parent duplicity to get two sets of buildings in there where one would not be allowed if they were combined, uh, at least as the way it's presented, is more specifically, is what is y'all's legacy? I mean, y'all have been, every single vote yes on these new developments is a vote to turn us into Gwinnett County. I mean, we're already three-fourths of the way there, and unless you want nothing for our kids and grandkids to be left, then keep voting the way you're doing, because that's what it's gonna end up. I was born in DeKalb County where I was raised. My parents moved there in nineteen sixty-nine, I was born in seventy-four. In the early seventies, that was one of the best places to live in the United States. My dad says it reminds him of O'Conny County five years ago. Well, then it turned into Cobb County. And that place turned to hell. Then it turned to Gwinnett County. I remember in the late eighties when that was a place to live. Would y'all want to be living in Gwinnett County now? Y'all are the ones with every vote yes on these new developments. That's what y'all are turning us into, and the place that y'all have come to know and love, that you wanted to see your families raised in, is gonna turn into a place nobody wants to raise in. And when you're sitting there wondering why it happened or how did this happen, y'all need to look in the mirrors. Is it in us voting for this stuff? It's y'all doing it. Is this what you want to leave your children and grandchildren? I asked y'all to contemplate that before you make your decision. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Peter did leave some time, so I'll ask uh anybody else that signed up. I had Christopher, I had uh couple others, anybody? I'll let you come up first, and I see you in the back.
Hey, first.
You go first.
Alright, Mr. Pittman's paid and.
Let's have your name again.
Okay, I'm sorry, Albert Stansel. Ten thirty-one Sunnyside Drive.
Alright, thank you.
And uh, Mr. Pittman was talking about, he didn't understand uh the deal about the exhaust break and all. I invited you to come sit on my porch with me and my wife.
And his only question was how it pertained to this particular, cuz it's four forty-one.
We need a buffer zone.
There you go.
Uh. Also, you guys, I wish you would look at stuff uh like this warehouse, mini warehouse thing. There are certain kind of people in life, there's givers and there's takers. And this group's a taker. They offer really nothing to uh for the community or anything, you know, like I say, jobs, uh tax base, anything like it. They're just taking, they're gonna use up uh the, the services for, to get their street rights, stuff like it. I, I, I still think that uh, especially on this corner here, it's just not enough for.
So I think that's Christopher that still wanted to speak.
Hello, my name's Christopher Reed. I live at eighty-seven fifty Macon Highway. Um, the entrance to this facility would actually be right across the street from my house. So that two-story building with those lights that are on twenty-four seven would be in my windows twenty-four seven. Even with blackout curtains, I can still see through them. I could still, I still get all that light pollution. Um, I do want to uh also bring to your attention, like I know for me personally, uh, I've experienced uh three or four crime incidents. Um, there at that address since I've lived there. Uh, one of them being on record, you can check the, the uh police reports from it. Um, there's a daycare right at the bottom of that hill, right there at the church. Um, and that would cause more foot traffic, more traffic in that area, um increasing a- all kinds of different concerns uh coming into that daycare area into um just the neighborhood in general. Uh, you're increasing traffic, you're increasing visibility, uh therefore the possibility of increasing crime and needing more of a police presence there as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, just a couple more minutes. If there's anybody that feels they got one more or two more things to add.
Pro just broke, there's a smart road.
Yeah.
I appreciate, as I moved from Gwinnett County in ninety-eight to here, and I have seen all the stuff I saw there where they never saw a plan or, it didn't like.
Alright. Let, let's, cuz we should have the speaking done up front, but we allowed that last.
My name is Kristen Bell. I live in Ivywood. I'm thirteen hundred Ivywood Drive. My grandfather, Harry Gainesworth, was one of the first homeowners in that neighborhood. He lived there for fifty-four years. And I recently just took over the house, the property from him. Um, he still owns it, but I'm caring for the property. Um, I basically grew up in that neighborhood too. Um, my mother is here. She grew up in the neighborhood. She lived there. This is a residential neighborhood. I see families, Mallory's family walks every single day with her children and her husband. And this is dangerous. The amount of traffic that is coming through is dangerous. I go to work at Molly's Coffee Company. I um, and the manager there. And also, I would like to address what is his name? I'm sorry.
It's alright, you should be addressing us, so.
Sorry. He said that there would be um how many people coming through if it turned into a, a um restaurant? Twelve hundred, thank you. I work at a small business, a small coffee shop, a cafe, and it serves our community. And we see maybe maximum two hundred and fifty people come through every single day, and we have a drive-through. You're not going to increase the amount of people coming through. It will add to the community's um charm. It will support small businesses. And it will give people places to spend their money other than the storage unit. Um, which there's not a need for. I'm just dittoing what all of my lovely neighbors have said. Um, just think about that these are people living in this neighborhood and their safety should be your utmost concern. That's all I have to say.
Alright. So that pretty much does it for the public comments. Um. For opposition. Frank, I don't know that there's that many questions that they had. It's, it sounded pretty similar, but I'll let you have the floor for a few more minutes.
Well, I, I'll touch on a few that, that might have been different. Um. Let's see. Mr. DeRoche have um asked about stormwater pond, so there will be a stormwater pond. It will discharge into it to the ditch at the right away of four forty-one, not, not onto the residential units above. Um, the uh, we are not asked for any kind of buffer reduction on this, this rezone. Um, so the, that, that would not be the case. Um, Mr. Hone mentioned the buffer and light noise, and again, we're not asked for any kind of buffer reduction over what would be, you know, what would be allowed um by code already today. Uh, Miss, Miss Moy mentioned clearcutting lights and um again, same, same thing.
again, same, same thing there. I mean, there is a, Oconee County has lighting ordinance that you've got to follow to, to keep lights from, from interfering onto neighboring properties.
That's, that's.
They, they would not clear, they will, they will clear enough to do the development as shown on this plan. And there was a mention about office, if it was office space, it'd be minimized to eight to five. I, I mean, I, I don't know. I think it's eight fifteen. I'm still working. So I think that, that probably is not the case. As far as other storage facilities not being full, I, I don't know that I can speak on that, other than these people here do own other storage facilities. Most of the others owned in the county also own other storage facilities. And, and some of them are in, in process of redeveloping other properties because they are full, or, or, or at least pretty close to full. The, that was a comment that Peter mentioned about lights being fifty feet up. I think the, the county code limits it to twenty feet. Is that right, Mr. Herring? Thirty-five. But it won't be fifty feet up. We would beat any kind of lighting code that the county had in, in, in place. There are no wood crested woodpeckers on this property or anywhere else in this vicinity. That's been proven in the past. As far as IT manual being wrong, I mean, I, that's, that's the book that everybody goes by on every rezone that's ever come through this county and every other county. I don't, I don't know how to argue that that would be right or wrong. That's, that, that is the bible as it comes to traffic projections. Mr. Stansel, I do know what, what, what breaks sound like, and I, I appreciate that. Again, we, we are not asked for any kind of buffer reduction on this property. Mr. Reed mentioned foot traffic and crime. I don't know that a storage facility increases foot traffic necessarily. I think probably a restaurant or other kind of uses that some people have requested, or what would increase foot traffic and crime. Mrs. Bell mentioned this being a residential neighborhood and not for commercial use, but then mentioned coffee shop that happens to be right next door as well. Right, but I, I guess what I'm saying is if it's a residential neighborhood, then, then requesting this be something different than, than that. I mean, I don't know that, I mean, it's B two today. And, you know, two hundred and fifty cars into a, into a coffee shop is, is by traffic projection is five hundred trips a day. That's two fifty in, two fifty out. So that's significantly more than this, that's over ten times what this rezone right here would be. So again, this is zone B two today. We're not asking for a rezone. We're asking for just a change of the existing use, which will be a decrease in traffic. I do want to mention one more comment that I wrote down. There was a comment about Mr. Stansel mentioned that these people are takers and not givers. I guess I would argue that they're exactly the opposite of that. They give a lot of tax money. They don't take seats in schools. They don't take utilities. And, and they don't take other resources that, that the rest of us county citizens need. So I appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
All right, I want to thank everybody that's spoken. I, I can feel and hear the emotion. Before I bring it up to the planning commission, I'll just point out, we all volunteer for this job because we too also want to control growth. But we also are here to protect owners' rights and make sure that they abide by the codes that we have on the books and make sure that we're not making decisions that are a little too heated. I will also remind you before we bring it up here for any more questions and a vote, that the Board of Commissioners, who you vote in and vote out, whatever, they have the final decision. We are only an advisory board to their actual job. So you will need to go through this one more time before this matter is done, all right? So with that, I'll bring it up to the board or the commission here and see if there's any other questions we need to address before we deal with this one.
I would make a, I would make a motion to.
Well, let's, yeah, but let's go ahead and see if there's any questions.
Got a question from Frank. Frank, how many feet is it from the northeast side of Ivywood Drive down to the, down to the curve, the first curve going into this building? How many feet, how many feet is that? I can't tell.
Matt, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
You think it's three hundred feet?
Do y'all have an overall site plan? That may have some dimensions on it. Can't, if I can read that.
Will we ask him from Ivywood Drive? Or will we ask him from?
From, from the northeast side of Ivywood Drive, which may, you know, on the right most, the building most side to the, to the closest side.
Well, it looks like from the property marker to the driveway is two seventy-eight, so it's gotta be a little less than three.
That, is that Ivywood Drive right there?
Yeah, the little, the little one. Yes, that one.
The one is a private driveway, it's eight eighty Macon Highway. You guys have said it's that long, so it's gotta be longer than some.
It's right.
You've got two seventy-eight from the edge of the corner to this, and then you've got nineteen.
We, we got it, Melvin. Thank you.
I mean, you're looking at hundreds of there, nineteen hundred feet down here. So how far down here is it? Oh, I don't, I think you will see, I'd say it's at least, I'd say it's at least one hundred. Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the pins that you're setting, yeah.
All right. Do we think we've got that on well enough?
If I could make one comment as to what they're talking about, hopefully just.
Gavin, pull that mic towards you, please.
Hopefully just close that door, this one.
Yeah.
The part of what they're seeing up there is, is not, it, it's everything that, that is showing reflects the truth. But there is a considerable amount of right of way that is, has previously, that you see that, you know, has grass, has trees, has everything that comes up, or the other roadway. So if you live out there and you're, you're, you're thinking about trees and grass and so forth, those distances, and in fact, it's off the map and all that, is because a lot of that is, is, you know, considerable distance from that actual piece of property. So if, if you're looking at, at center lines.
They. We, we, well Gavin, let me, let me try it this way. Gavin, we're at the point where we need to be speaking to each other. All right, so let's keep the conversation between us or Mr. Herring or Mr. Pittman. All right. So any other questions pertaining this? All right. So at this time, I will open up the motions to two, five, seven. And I guess like we did before, we can do two, five, six at the same time here.
And I, I would make a motion to approve both, as we did before with the existing conditions.
So Gavin is, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Scott. All right, and so if you are in favor of two, five, seven and two, five, six, I'll just do one. No, I gotta do two raises of hands. So two, five, seven, all in favor of the motion as written with the staff's recommendations, please raise your right hand.
Whoa.
Whoa, we gotta do six before seven.
No, two, five, seven was listed first on this case. So two, five, seven, motion. So I have, and opposed. Thank you. All right, so two, five, six was the special use one, and I'll take a motion on, I've got the motion and the second, I'm taking a vote. If you're in favor of the special use for the storage facility, please raise your right hand. All right, so same opposed. All right, so we will again send this up to the Board of Commissioners, and they will entertain your comments as well. And you do get to vote them in and out. All right, so we'll take a break, a short break at this time. If anybody that has already conducted their business before us wants to exit, or you can stick around and see how we do on the next one. All right, guys, I need this room for some more business. So if you are leaving, you need to go ahead and leave and take the conversations, would you please? Yeah, I get, yeah, I get. Gotta get Guy back in here before you can go. I got you. Believe it on Guy, he is, he wears a sweater, he wears a sweater jacket. He turned the heat down too much.
That's right. It'll be hot next time.
Do we want to get that door? All right. Guy, I'll invite you up for P twenty-two zero two sixty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is special use P twenty-two zero two six zero ACM LLC is owner and applicant. This is located off of South Barnett Shoals. Parcel number D zero two zero one two D. It's currently zoned AG in the country states character area. And again, the request is a special use approval to revise one of the sixteen conditions from the twenty nineteen special use approval number seventy thirty-four, which is granted for a private college use on the property. This application seeks to revise condition number thirteen fifteen to allow for no more than six sites for temporary parking and use of recreational vehicles. Such sites shall be constructed according to the specifications attached here to as exhibit A. And the recreational vehicle site shall be used to one house volunteer professional workers, such as carpenters, electricians, plumbers, who are assisting in the construction of the improvements to the site. Number two, housing for visitors, just participating in college sponsored activities. And number three, persons attending retreats on the college campus. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packet, slightly larger version showing the proposed location of the RV sites. Again, slightly larger version showing the same. And these are architectural images that were submitted with the previous special use for the college. And staff recommends conditional approval subject to the following conditions. One and three are standard conditions. We modified number two slightly. At such time as condition number two and number three of the special use approval seventy thirty-four are implemented. The owner at their owner's expense shall construct the improvements required by the county for public water and wastewater for the subject property and shall convey the same. Three of all lean said improvements shall include all onsite improvements and such offsite improvements as are required by the county to provide service to the subject property. And then number four, condition number fifteen of twenty nineteen special use approval seventy thirty-four shall be amended to read as follows. No temporary housing shall be allowed except for temporary parking and use of recreational vehicles that may not exceed six in number. And shall only be used to house volunteer professional workers assisting with the construction of improvements to the site. And shall be temporary with removal following the completion of the campus construction. And that is all of the conditions. Thank you.
All right, the owner's agent or the owners?
Gentlemen, my name is Jim Warrens. I live at four, seven, five Ansley Drive in Athens. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I am the chairman of the Board of Trustees of the college who is getting ready to hopefully improve and occupy this property. Marshall Wilber, who's the president of the college, is teaching the last class of the semester tonight, and so she won't be able to be with us. She just felt like since it was the last class, that she couldn't get a substitute teacher in there, because kids always have empty questions about what's gonna be on the exam. The college is completely dependent upon donations in order to improve this site and to build these buildings and to develop the college. The D cell lane that's required as part of county requirements has been approved. The plan's been approved. Those are out for bids. That's the first thing that has to be done, and we anticipate that'll be done the first of the year. The next play phase is for the preliminary plans for infrastructure. The internal roads, the water, the sewer, the electricity. And in developing those, rather than having to come back at a later time and ask for the six RV sites, it was determined that the most efficient way to do it was to do it at this time. So we're here before you to ask for this approval. So that when that development plan goes to the planning staff, that, that this can be approved, can, can be included if it's approved. As pointed out, the original special stipulation or special condition number fifteen was just a flat, no temporary housing shall be allowed. I was not a part of that. I wasn't involved. So I don't know the reason for that. I've asked several folks to find out why that was put in there, and nobody can give me any answer. But the purpose of this application But the purpose of this application is twofold. One is is so that the six sites can be there so that temporary workers to say on a short term basis can come in and help with the construction of the facilities on the college. There's a number of groups of retired professional folk that do this. One such is called the Sower Ministry, and they have representative here tonight will explain to you how theirs works. I'm familiar with some others because of another board that I sit on on an institution over in Alabama where folks will come in and have been extremely helpful, but they come in with their RVs, they utilize the facilities on site, they're there anywhere from three weeks to six weeks depending on what the project is. They do the work and then they they move on to whatever their next project is. Obviously, any work that's done has to be done to O'Conne County standards. We're not looking at a bunch of jack legs to come in and and to do things that have to be redone. That just defeats the purpose of Mr. Snyder, who's going to talk in a minute, told me that I should have used the word skilled workers rather than professional workers. He says that not everybody that works on their teams is necessarily from one of the professions, but they are skilled. They also do things other than construction depending on what project they're on and where they help out. The other thing that we've asked for that the planning staff has eliminated from their condition for short term places to stay for those who be able to visit the college for college functions. This would be parents coming from student activity, either a parent's weekend or to be here for a graduation. It could be somebody who's here to do a performance on the college campus and has their own RV and needs a place to stay while they're being at the college. A guest lecturer again who provides his own place to stay. These are not going to be all the time things, but we'd like to have the flexibility in order to be able to do this. The college also offers a number of short courses. And and hopefully, once this site is developed, to have short term retreats. And we'd like to have these sites available for those uses. RV parks and RV subdivisions are defined in the O'Conne County code. What we're asking for here does not really fit either an RV park or an RV subdivision. This is short term use for college activities, is not open to the public. It would be people who are here for a specific purpose at the invitation of the college. O'Conne County UDC three twenty-nine point ten limits continuous occupancies of sites such as this and RV parks and subdivisions to three months. Our current application narrows that down and specifies that it would be limited to sixty consecutive days. There has been a concern raised that perhaps this limitation was put in there not to house students. The accreditation standards that the college operates under specifically provide that students cannot be housed in recreational vehicles. So there will be no students, and if we need to state that as a condition, I don't have any problem doing that. The six RV sites are proposed to be located in the back center of the college's property, and it's, as you say, it's shown on the site here. This Barnett Shoals Road, this is a current entrance, it shows the new D cell lane that'll be put in and then to access RV sites, you gotta come all the way down into the middle of the one hundred and fourteen acre sites. Several weeks ago, we invited the neighbors that live in the adjoining subdivision to come out and to walk the property with us. We showed them this plan that you're seeing here. We talked to them about it. I don't know whether, oh, I do know that not necessarily everybody that lived in those subdivisions came that day. There were about ten people that we walked around. I noticed that there's a number of folks signed up in opposition to this. I'm sure that they are concerned about how this will be as a proximity to their property. I asked the engineer to give me some information. From the edge of the RV site right here over to this corner of the adjacent subdivision is five hundred and sixty-five feet. Again, from the edge of the RV site to the corner of these two lots is seven hundred feet. And to the corner of the next lot is eight hundred and forty-two feet, and then obviously it increases and goes down there. The plan calls for a fifty foot buffer. Right now, that has not been planted. There are some naturally existing plantings in there. When this was a golf course, there was a fairway that went down through here. We have a problem right now with property being undeveloped, of people coming out and riding their all terrain vehicles on there and so on. The people that did come talk to us told us that there was another problem, and they explained that some of the people that live in here have actually been cutting into the fifty foot buffer and plan to claim that as their property. Obviously, once we start doing development down in this area, and that's the first area that's going to be developed, this building right here, we think is going to be the first one to be built, assuming we can raise the money, is that at that point in time, then we will come in as a part of the development and plant the fifty foot buff. Additionally, this area right here is all existing natural area that will remain, and you can see that it's between where these RV sites are and where these lots are. The other thing that I call your attention to is to look at the topography. This is the high point on the property right here, and then it falls off this way and it falls off this way. So that between these lots and where these RV sites are, is there's actually a hill. So that the subdivision is downhill on the one side and RV sites are downhill on the other side. As I stated, we would just like to have the flexibility to be able to utilize these sites on an as needed basis in the future for purposes allowed by the college. We don't anticipate that they will be continuously occupied. They would only be occupied when somebody's there for a specific purpose at the invitation of the college and for no other reason. So as far as interference with this neighborhood, it should be either non-existent or extremely minimal. And I will be glad to answer any questions that that anybody has about this.
Now, you said you had some other people that were going to come up.
Yes, or Mr. Snyder is here. He had signed up.
Okay, I see Doug Snyder. All right, so I'll invite you to come up at this time, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm here on behalf of the college. My wife and I were part of Sowers Ministry, and I wanted to explain how these type of ministries work to help Christian organizations. First, Sowers Ministry is a Christian Couples RV Works Ministry. So as you become part of that ministry, what you're doing is you're volunteering your time to work for different Christian organizations around the United States. We personally worked in Florida, Washington, Idaho, South Dakota. We worked it on campuses. We worked on we worked for Christian camps, retreat centers. Down in Florida, we worked for a pair, pair of Christian order station down there that provided a lot of helps within the communities. In order to be part of Sowers Ministry, a place like the college has to be able to provide places for us to park our RVs. Our RVs were motor homes or large fifth wheels. My wife and I traveled in a thirty-eight foot fifth wheel. We did that for eighteen months. We served in Florida, we served in Washington, Idaho, South Dakota, and now we're here in Georgia. There are five projects in the state of Georgia that Sowers Ministry supports, want us to co a college. They come in and they work and they help the college do what needs to be done. A lot of times you're going in and you're doing maintenance work for the college. I know that my wife pulled weeds for three weeks at a at a Christian retreat center. I helped replace air conditioning units. We worked in a thrift store. We did lots of different things for the organizations that we work for. So we come in, there's usually anywhere from two couples to ten couples that come in and work for the different projects. Athens College of Ministry is asking for six. They would allow up to six couples to come in. Sowers Ministry works for a period of three weeks on, and you're done, you're gone, you move on to your next project. We work a four day week. We come in and do whatever the organization asks us to do while we're there. It is primarily retirees. We come from all walks of life. My wife was an RN. I was an insurance agent for forty-five years. And not a lot of use for RNs or insurance agents working on campuses or whatever, but we come to serve. We come to help and we always appreciated what was given to us because Sowers Ministry requires that the organization provides an RV site with ample electricity, water and sewer. Beyond that, you know, we receive no compensation. We receive nothing. We do it our own accord. But Athens College of Ministry needs the help of these types of organizations. Sowers is only one of those types of organizations. But there are others that do travel and do serve around the country. And they they have already contacted, been in touch with Sowers and have an application waiting once the campus is up and running. So I can answer any questions, I guess. I mean, there was a lot of experiences that we had with it. But it's not, I guess, to say it's not the typical RV that you're looking at. It's only people who live in there. You know, we've traveled, we've stayed in parking areas where oil riggers lived in their RVs, and I can understand that's a whole different ballgame. You know, they're not what you would expect, but again, we're not a campground. You know, we're not, you know, playing music all night long. You know, there's no smoky campfires, none of that's going on. I mean, we come in, we work, we live, we move on. And that's the type of ministries that are helping these Christian organizations. And like I said, there's five of them in five projects in Georgia, Toccoa College being one of them. Conyers has a retreat center. There is a children's home down in Macon that we serve. So lots of places that use these types of ministries. Athens College would like to be able to do that because it provides good workers for them, dedicated workers for them, and they help keep the properties nice and they do projects that need to be done. I can answer any questions that you may have.
We'll preserve that right to call you back up if we have it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I don't have anybody else written in that wants to speak in favor, so if they have a few more minutes on their clock, but we'll go ahead and open it up to those that are opposed. I have Zach Wood sign up first.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to talk about this. First, I'd like to say that I wish, I'm Zach Wood, I'm from eleven forty Golf Course Lane, apologize. I would like to join the tour to see it. I didn't get an invitation. I live right on the edge of the property. And I would like to see what the layout was going to be. I would like to have heard the story. I didn't. I just found out about this a couple of weeks ago from one of my neighbors who did attend the tour. I'm concerned about a couple of things. I'm just going to list my points here because I imagine a few of us want to talk. First, it wasn't in the original plans. The neighborhood, to my knowledge, was very supportive and is supported, remains supportive of the college. But the idea of an RV park or campground was not a plan. We didn't know about that. Second, noise. I know that you've heard that the people there aren't going to be partying and making a lot of noise and campfires. I'm, I hope I can trust them. But once you guys vote, once this moves forward, what recourse do we have if they do party and make noise and 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 cause problems? In addition, the fifty foot buffer, I'm glad to hear that that's going to be planted. Because right now there is some problems, especially with my neighbors whose land is right up against it. I don't directly have a problem with it, but I've heard complaints that it's not been maintained. Property values. If this is established, I am concerned about what's going to happen. When I bought the house, it was a golf course. Since it's moved into this area of the college, I think that's not going to hurt things, but I am worried about RV sites and campgrounds near my house. And future use. What if this, you know, I'm hoping the college is successful, but what if it changes hands? How will the zoning be affected at that point? Can it turn into a trailer park? So those are kind of my main concerns right here. All centers around. I bought the house with one mindset, and I would like guarantees that my property values aren't going to be that. And so with that, thank you for your time.
Got you. So Mitch. I'm sorry, Seth Mathis.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mitch Matthews. I have trouble writing. I'm fifty-nine years old and I just slid it across the paper. I live at ten thirty Golf Course Lane, and I'm one of the houses that back up to the area and I've actually talked with Miss Wilbur several times to get her permission to mow with a tractor a buffer. There are a lot of children in this subdivision and high grass and woods make a great place for snakes. So she kindly gave me the permission to mow probably two hundred two hundred yards back and forth to keep it clean. She's a very nice lady. I've been at the address for a little over twenty-two years. I was there when it was Burnt Hills Golf Course. I think a lot of people have probably played on that or tried to play on it. There's a lot of good people in that entire subdivision. There's a lot of good people down Barnett Shoals Road. When Miss Wilbur applied, whatever the proper term is for the College of Ministry to be put on that hundred and fourteen acres. I did talk to her then and a, an initial plan was issued to everybody that wanted a copy, and I did get a copy. And I must have trashed it. But at that time, when I talked to her, I think she paid about one point one or one point two million dollars for the hundred and nine or hundred and fourteen acres. And she explained what she had planned to put there, and she said that she was not going, or the College of Ministry was not going to do anything until it was fully financed. Okay. This gentleman right here, he does great work. You do great work. I'm in the water and wastewater business throughout the southeast. I deal with contractors, engineers, planning commissions. I probably know the process better than anybody. You made the, you made the statement that it was going out to bid the first of January. To me, that means the whole building, construction, infrastructure is going to be bid by a contractor that can do everything. In the twenty-two years of being in the water and waste business, I have never seen volunteers helping a contractor. So I'm not sure if we're missing some information or if there is a disconnect in the, in what we're understanding. I counted today, there are seventeen houses on Golf Course Lane. This is a cul-de-sac. And based upon my county tax, we probably pay fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars to the county of O'Conne just off of that street. Our taxes every year, as everybody in this county goes up. We don't complain because we moved here knowing that you got to pay for better things. We want our investment protected and a six site RV park, whether it be called now permanent or temporary, does not sit good with people that have four hundred thousand dollar houses. We appreciate the effort of this organization to help the College of Ministry in their pursuit. But as I told you, all the projects I've worked through my twenty-two years, contractors from all over the country will go to wherever the jobs are, and it's the responsibility of that contracting company to house their workers. I deal with contractors out of Mississippi and Arkansas that have jobs in South Carolina and North Carolina, and they rent whole floors of rent by the day, rent by the week type hotels. We have some of those lodges around the perimeter of Athens. So there's no intention to prohibit anybody from helping this purpose, but we I, there's no intention to prohibit anybody from helping this purpose, but we respectfully request that you ask the board to stick, or excuse me, the commissioners to stick with the original plan. And the original plan was to have all structures, classrooms, libraries, dormitories, whatever you want to call it. That was in the original plan. So we respectfully ask that you stick to that original plan. Thank you. Have a good evening and I'm very good.
All right, Eric. Did Gattaker?
I'm Swiss, darling. So I I do appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the board and uh, my concern not to kind of go over everything that Mitch did. Mitch is a good neighbor of mine. Um, I I see where he's coming from with with mowing that that section and getting approval from it. Uh, when we met a couple of weeks back and walked through the property, that was brought up that 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 buffer wasn't being maintained and that was never brought up. That permission was given for that. So I'm I'm coming from the perspective that we approved and we were very supportive, and I think the ministry can do some good things. And I I think the volunteer organization come in to to volunteer the services to build this uh, is it can do some good things. However, I I see what was initially pushed. I see how when this meeting was called to meet at the golf course, it's several people within the subdivision, looking back at I had I had some time since that meeting to kind of contemplate and reflect on how that took place. Uh, I found about it. We had a person in the neighborhood that I think saw it on Facebook, contacted some neighbors who contacted me. Uh, never received anything in the mailbox talked about. We're gonna apply for zoning for special purpose for this temporary housing. Uh, so I I I, so I can see that we do have some people in there probably had no knowledge about it, Zach being one of them. And that right over here, I believe this gentleman didn't know about it either. So at this meeting, it's obvious that the property is being trespassed on. There's a, there's a dump site on the property as I'm leaving the property. Uh, I thought it was a homeless encampment. I got out of the car. I walked over there. It's a bunch of mattresses and some covers that somebody decided to pause at that property. Uh, there is a chain link fence or a a chain keeps cars from coming in at the main entrance. But there's a lot of obvious access points off of Barnett Shoals Road where anybody can get in there and no action, no action has been taken to prevent additional cars from coming into that area for dumping. So that along with the, you know, the the fifty foot natural buffer zone that was in the original plans, that's not being maintained or some allowances. I can see what the allowances are made, but it's not according to the original plan. I question, I question if we have these six sites. And what my understanding was, it was going for the volunteers. And now I'm here in force for the visitors as well. Now, my whole career is at the University of Georgia, and there's no that I'm aware of permanent sites for RVs on campus. Okay, for these visitors that wants to come support their their children who's at the University of Georgia. So I I I I think that there's a way that this can be done. I'm afraid that once this gets rezoned and we're talking about it's not your typical mobile home housing, trailer parks. There's some kind of in between, but I'm afraid that once that zoning is occurs, once it's approved, then what? What happens if we don't go according to plan? And when I look back at the 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 property now, and I see the effort to kind of maintain that property and to stick with what was according to the original plan, I don't see a lot of effort there. And maybe this all come together, but right now I don't have a lot of effort. I don't see a lot of effort. And it's hard for me to say yes, let's go for the six spots of temporary housing. Because I don't know what, once that zoning is approved, what kind of leg are they going to grow on this? And and we're in it, and I don't want the college to fail, but if it did, and that property changed hands, now we have the zoning change, you know, what can that property turn into? So that's, that's my comments. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. So Beth Tatum, you are up next if you'd like to speak. Somebody signed you.
I don't like to speak in front of people. Um, my name is Beth Tatum. I live at ten seventy Golf Course Lane, so with my husband. And we raised four children there, and we have great memories of the golf course, running back and forth to the pool and everything, and it was a wonderful place to raise children. I worked in Oconee County Schools. Fell in love with this community. I don't really recognize it now. Um, it's, I know Gwinnett's coming in. I saw a lot more of that tonight, but I'm not here about that. I'm here to let you know that when we have seen really no, um, behind our house, I'll speak to that. We've had seen no one taking care of it at all. Um, it's just overgrown, and as they said, people are cutting through the golf course, dumping. It's a big dump ground. It's not policed. Um, I don't know what goes on back there. I have no idea. But I I have little confidence. And I don't think there'll be any intentional misuse. I really hope the college makes that. I'm all for that. But I put children through college and no one ever offered me a place to stay, nor did I ever expect that. And I wouldn't expect to go into anyone's backyard when I went to see my children or when any of their colleges had renovations, and I paid lots of stuff for at different colleges at Georgia Young Harris, all kind of colleges, but I never expected anybody to to put me up or to put up their their workers. Again, I hope that the college makes it. I sincerely do, but I don't, I've seen everything change. And I have not seen the property cared for like I would think it should have been cared for.
All right, Beth, are you going to have Kyle come up as well?
But I'm going to be real quick because I also work for a company right here out in Watkinsville, Thomas Cubic. We travel, we do a lot of work at power plants, stuff like that, involve wiring, stuff that don't matter, but we're in in involved with traveling and doing our work. We've never had a contractor or a or a plant that we work for offer us a place to stay. We have put up, be put up in motels, wherever else. I understand that this is a special zoning, special permit. Usually there's a time or something like that may be set, you know, if you're going to use it for people to come in and work on a place. I looked at your plans for the college. People coming in work can't build that college. It's going to take skilled, lost people to get that thing done in any amount of time. And so then I heard, well, we're going to have spots for people to come in for a retreat, for parents to come in. So that means it's going to be carried on and on. It's not going to be an end. And that's just, you know, Oconee County, we bought here, we raised our kids here because it's a great place to be. And we put it as an investment. We've been in our house over twenty two years. We love it. When you start letting camper parks and stuff like that come in, whether it's at the college or not, we won't go college there if it works out. But we've seen nothing that makes us think from what's going on down there, that it's going to work out. We're talking about millions of dollars. So that that's just my thoughts on it and hope y'all do the right thing.
All right, so I have a Jan Stansel and Elmer Stansel. But that name sounds familiar from the other item, so maybe they would just sign up for all of them. Anybody else want to speak in opposition that didn't get a chance to sign up? Go ahead. You got time, so come up here.
Everybody's done a great job. My name is Jim Hubert.
Okay, so you crossed yourself off. I see.
I did. I crossed it off just because there were a lot of people I knew time was of essence this evening. And I am really the closest one to these RV parks. I'm on that little spit corner right there where the golf course used to go by and the green was right beside my house. I really would have liked to have done the walk with through with with the group with Marcia. I know her. She's in Rotary with me, but I've been in Rotary in Oconee County for over thirty years. Also been in the subdivision for twenty three years now. I don't have a problem with the college itself. I don't know that I really have a big problem with an RV park, but or RV spots, excuse me, not a park. But what I do have a problem with is just some of the same things these guys have said. Whenever you say temporary, I would expect something in there to say it ends here and it's no longer there. I E. The same situation that say the college doesn't go. We've had it. They've had it for six years now. They've done nothing. And I think six spots, although it sounds good, look how many buildings they're going to do. I don't even have to be in construction to know that that's going to take at least ten to fifteen years to complete. They don't have a lot of students. I know they're trying to get somewhere, and it's a good organization. I've talked to Marcia many times about it. Even when they first took over and bought the property. But I just don't see where that's something that I want in my backyard. I'm concerned, same thing as all these other guys here, you know, families. I don't want that part there. I I get the idea behind it. But what happens in the future if we allow six spots? What happens if the college doesn't make it? Or they don't complete it? Somebody else takes it over. It's there without a definite end to a temporary spot. I don't see how it works. Doesn't work for me anyway. Anyway, I'll stop there. Everybody else has said a lot of the things that I would have said anyway. Thank you, gentlemen.
We've used our time wisely there. So I assume that's, everybody needs to speak, and we only have like a minute or so anyway, so. All right, we'll close it there. Uh, we're going to let Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. It is, it's not unusual in these meetings. There's a lot of misunderstanding, and hopefully I can clear that up with about four points. Number one is I know for a fact that Ms. Wilbur has never represented to anybody that this would not be built until it was fully funded. If somebody pointed out, it's paid more than a million dollars, or the college paid more than a million dollars for this project, they have been paying down that note, and it's down now to about half, about six hundred thousand dollars. Number two is they've got several hundred thousand sitting in a a development fund for capital expenditure. And as I pointed out earlier, this will be developed in phases. It's not, we're not going to sit here until we've got fifteen or twenty million dollars to build it all out. That's, we just can't work that way. As I said, the first thing to go in is the D cell line. That's over a hundred thousand dollars. That money's set aside. It's out for bids. It's been approved as a phase in the development of this property. We've had meetings with Mr. Heron and about what the next phases will be. And as I said, the next phase will be to put in infrastructure. But in the roads, the water, the sewer, the electricity. We're looking at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put that in. We have to raise that money to put that in. Then, once that's done, then hopefully the first building that'll be built is this one down here uh, on on the end, on the bottom. It's called House of Hope. He's got two of them. That'll eventually be retreat centers, but they're large enough to be able to have some classroom space on one end and some dormitory space on the other end. That will be the next phase. Right now, the intention is, assuming we get the money to to build that out. We're talking about a million dollars for each of those. I I did not do a good job of explaining myself. The people that come in, such as the Sowers Ministry, will not be coming in to construct these buildings. Everything that's been said by everybody here tonight is correct, and you you gentlemen know this, you you're in the development end of, maybe not professionally, but you sit on this board is that the buildings will be let out for contract. And a and a contractor will bid, and if ordered to bid, then he brings in his own crews to put in the foundation, to put in the plumbing, the the electricity and so on, roughed in, it gets inspected, the building gets built out. We're not asking for volunteer help to do that kind of construction. But there's a lot of other work that needs to be done on the campus that can be done by volunteer workers. There's garden sheds. There's facilities for for having a a garden, both a demonstration garden. There's a ball field to go in here. There's an amphitheater that's right here. Those kinds of things can be done with volunteer workers. Again, according to county standards, up to professional work. Right now, we have the same concern that all these neighbors do. We've got a hundred and fourteen acres out here that has some roadway in it. It's got, there's a wellhouse right in here from where there was a well that serviced the 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 clubhouse and the tennis courts and the swimming pool and so on. There's ponds down on the lower part of the property, and there were pump houses down there with some infrastructure in place where they pump water to be able to to water the the fairways and the greens and so on. A- a- all of those are in a state of disrepair. The the pump house up here has been repaired with volunteer help and with donations. He's correct. We don't own this property here, and it's fully accessible off of Barnett Shoals Road. I could take my pickup truck and drive off of the Bob Godfrey Road and drive in and drive down onto the property and go anywhere on the property I want to. I I don't know of any way that's feasible right now, short of building a fence around the property, which would be cost prohibitive to prevent the kind of thing that these neighbors are talking about. We are aware of it, and we've tried to do some things with it. We've had semi annual days out there, cleanup days in which the property has been bush hogged and in which trash has been hauled off. Uh, various other things have been done that can be done again by 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 volunteer workers. We're not talking about putting in six RVs down here to provide a space for workers to live or for parents coming to things. We're talking about putting in six spaces where if somebody wants to bring their own RV in, such as this Sowers Ministry, that there's a place for them to bring it in, and the conditions under which those were built are laid out in the application as to the width and the kind of water and sewer electricity that needs to go into that. The last point is what happens if the college doesn't go and this property changes hands? Well, the short answer to that is, is that this is a special use zone. Nothing can be built on this property other than what's outlined on this sheet and what was previously approved. And hopefully, if you'll allow us to make the change tonight, even if you approve the RV sites. If somebody else buys this, they can't come in and just construct a driveway down here and start using six RV sites. It can only be used for the purpose that's allowed by the special use. And any change in the event that there's a change in ownership is going to have to come back through the process to be approved by planning, come back before this board and go back to the county commission. So I I understand their concerns. The the folks that are here tonight don't deal with this day in and day out, and they had very legitimate questions, but hopefully we have answered all of them to their satisfaction and and to your satisfaction. And so I would ask you to approve what we've asked for, making the one change that, and this is all on me. If what it says professional is to change that to skill. Uh, and then still allow the college to be able to use these sites while the college is in operation for college approved activities when they have visitors rather than just having these sites sit empty and only be used when there's construction going. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll sum it up right there. Um, I guess I will ask Guy to just reconfirm that that's is the understanding. All of this would have to come back to this board if it changed hands and they had other ideas as to how to use it.
That's correct.
So with that, I'll go ahead and bring it up there.
May I ask him one question?
Well, we're starting that discussion.
Yeah, I remember for, it reads clearly that that it it is temporary and with the construction of improvements to the site it shall be it will be a removal of completion of the campus construction. So, but we we're talking about the entire campus construction. Is that what we're talking about? That that it'll basically be That, that it'll basically be, be open to uh, use for. The entire construction of the, you know, entire site like.
I believe that was the intent of the request.
All right.
So yeah, condition four does not give them uh, RV sites. In perpetuity, it's, it's during the construction phase. He's asked for something different than what staff has recommended. So staff has recommended this construction phase, which is what Gavin was asking. So, but the request has been for in perpetuity or as long as they own the property. So just to make that clear. All right, Matt, I think.
So some of the residents concerned over here was noise coming from the six RV sites. And so how would the county regulate that? You know, noise on, since they like from eleven P M, can you give us?
Yeah, we have a noise ordinance. That's right. And during off hours, sheriff can forces that. So we do, we have a noise ordinance to address that.
So if there's a truce noise or something that bothers the subdivision, we got code. Things to handle that, just like if one of the neighbors had a noise in there.
That's correct.
I have one guy.
Yes.
I'm, I'm curious about the, there seems to be ambiguity in the septic tank service or the sewage service. Is that just to be addressed later?
So the previous special use allows them to use um, septic. Um, until such time as. I guess funding is available to extend to, to run sewer or use a package plant. So there were previous negotiations. And in the settlement of the previous special use case that addressed septic and water. So they're allowed to use onsite septic. They're allowed to use water onsite as opposed to running water and sewer. Our standard. Condition number two typically addresses water and sewer needs. Um, so that's why we put that. That wording in the very beginning of that to make sure we reflected what was previously agreed upon. Uh, in that settlement agreement and in that special use. All right.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, I have one from Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Warren, uh, didn't have a pencil in my hand. You talked about how many feet it was.
Yes, sir.
From the closest lot and the further spot.
Okay, from the, the closest lot, Mr. Uh, Hubert, they got up here.
Right.
He owns the lot that's right here in the corner.
Okay.
If, if you'll notice to start with is there's a big area that's cannot be developed. And then there's, then here's Mr. Hubert's lot. This is the corner from the corner of his lot.
Yeah.
Down to this line right here. Is. Well.
Five hundred feet?
It, no, it's more than that. It's almost two football fields. I've got it right. Oh, here it is. Five hundred and sixty-five feet.
Five sixty-five.
Yes. And, and to the other corner of Mr. Hubert's lot, because the line, of course, runs at an angle, is it's seven hundred feet.
Seven hundred. Okay.
And then from the corner, the, the, the lot next door is, I call it the Myers Lot, because that's the name that's on there. Is to the corner of that lot, the one lot width away from Mr. Hubert is eight hundred and forty-two feet.
How long, how long do you think you? Total buffer is only seventy, only seventy.
Well, okay.
Do you know how far the, the whole thing, the whole, the whole?
Well, there's a.
Say, it'll say lot one up there, down through here. So every lot that borders you would be. Twelve hundred feet or thirteen hundred?
You're talking about the distances from here to, to these?
Yeah.
I, I don't have those, the, the, uh, the engineers just gave me those three measurements.
Oh, okay.
But the thing that I think is important, and, and I know it's a concern of these homeowners, is that. Once we start building in here, we've got to put in the fifty-foot buffer. That, that's county code. Uh, you know, there's buffer in almost every rezonant. Again, this was a special use. That buffer's part of that special use.
Yeah. So there's no line of sight between any lot in the subdivision where the R six.
I don't believe there, I don't believe there is because of either, either there's a hill. Or the, this area in here is all planted with, with trees. And so you're going to have a buffer, may well still have some open space where the old fairway is, but then everything that's within this. Line looks like a cloud here. That, that's all natural space and it's limited. It's, again, this was. This was part of the special use was that that would remain as natural space.
Okay. I have the rec site.
Yeah, the public comment is closed. I, I think I can make this point for him. The fifty-foot buffer has not been planted yet, so they still live on the fairway. And the fairway is. Part of the five hundred feet. So right now they're, they're seeing through there, but the fifty-foot buffer is a requirement.
Right.
I assume all we have to do is say that fifty-foot buffer has to be planted before the RV spots.
Yeah, so is that, so you're fifty-foot buffer at time of plant going to be a open bar?
Yes, well, it's whatever. But I can't, but it's, it's a naturally planted.
Okay, all right, then.
So. All right, Stephen, you had a question?
No.
You've got yours? All right, anybody else have a question? So the fifty-foot buffer has not been planted yet and that is part of the issue that we heard today. Is that uh, the buffer doesn't exist yet. All right, any other? Comments, questions?
Yes, I forgot. I had wrote down another one from Mr. Warren. How long is a, is a stay from, from your uh, volunteer organizations? How long is your, do you anticipate your, your, your temporary organization coming? They will stay for two days or ten days?
Well, when the, when the Sowers organization comes in that Mr. Snyder talked about.
Yeah.
They come in for three-week blocks with the right to remain a, a fourth week. So that they have transitioned wherever their next site is.
So a month.
So a month. And, but there are other organizations that might come in for as long as six weeks. And that's the reason why in the application is when we listed conditions in Exhibit A is that it be limited to sixty continuous days.
Okay.
And, and as I pointed out, the Oconee County U D C has a limit of ninety continuous days. But we specifically asked for a shorter period of time.
Does, does that pretty much have it?
I have a little more if the guys. Who enforces that? Is there, does code enforcement?
Yes, sir. That's right.
So that's, that's a regular occurrence.
That's right.
Uh, okay. How about somebody that comes? With uh. Kids. And they say, we're here, we're in the county.
Yeah, no, that's not a permanent residence. So, no. That's correct. Yes, sir. That's not, no.
There is a proviso that, and we do have a bus that stops at the uh, RV park on um, eighty, one eighty-six. But it is for a little bit longer stays and, and it has to be arranged, so it wouldn't be unheard of. But from what we've heard, the people that are coming are less likely to bring kids. And if they're for the construction phases anyway.
Reason I asked that question is because I've kind of, you know, a little bit investigated on my part.
Yeah.
About the school going through.
Right.
And it is so old. There was no. Limitation on how long I guess.
We, we put the ninety-day on the new part, but there's still RVs that stay there, but.
Whole park.
In this case, this isn't an RV park. This is a.
Yeah, I'm staying. I, I'm just trying to clarify, you know, let people know that. That the reason a bus runs through the R P V park is because it was before. Conditions.
Yeah, that's.
So when people live in that RV park, their children go go.
I don't think we're building an RV park here is what I. We could add that condition on this. And of course, like I said, right now, the staff has recommended that the condition be only. For the construction pains, which we've heard could last fifteen years or so. Uh, but at least there would be some sort of timeframe. And if we want to stick in some other provisos, you guys are welcome to. Bring those to us. All right, so any other questions or? Do I have a motion? And for the couple of newbies on here, you can make a motion with uh, uh, additional language if you want to stick something in. All right. Motion one way or another.
I'm motion to approve with conditions from staff. And stipulation on age of guests.
So you want to add in a eighteen and above or? So adding language. Age of RV residents eighteen or older. Is that enough verbiage, you think? All right, so I have a motion to approve with the four conditions changing. Condition four, just to add an age limit of eighteen years or older. Do I have a sec?
Second.
All right. So now we have a motion to approve with the four conditions as per staff. With the addition of the eighteen-year-old limitation. And I have a first and a second, so let me ask all in favor of approval with conditions, raise your right hand. Okay, and those against, raise your right hand, please. Okay. So that has succeeded and it will be forwarded to the Board of Commission. For another discussion of it and another uh, redo. I want to thank you guys for your. Business.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So thank you.
Scott was first. I gotta ask who was second.